Call of meeting to order and ask for recording with members present and absent.
Barton.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Kingleton.
Here.
And Hanson is absent.
Opening meeting compliance taken place?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alvin Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the County Clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, the notice of the date, times, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. Consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists in discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Three-one addition of items to new business to the agenda. Three-two minutes of the meeting that may fifth. Three-three approval of finance report. Three-four approval of purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year 25. Three-five approval of extra duty assignment schedule. Three-six approval of activity fund report. Three-seven approval of activity fund fundraisers. Three-point-eight approval of activity fund inter account transfers. Three-point-nine approval of the child nutrition report. Three-point-ten approval of board policies and procedures. And three-point-eleven declare the following items as surplus. So we'll back up and start with three-point-one. Any addition of items or new business to the agenda?
Oh, have you new business?
Wonderful. Give everybody a second if you have not already to peruse the minutes of the May fifth, 24th, 5th regular board meeting. Entertain them. You have to do that to the end. See, I always do that. I want to jump ahead and just, I guess, bow down.
Just do it. Just get it all over with.
Yeah.
Play with the band-aid off. Okay, here we go. Any questions about the minutes? Hearing now, and move on to three-point-three. Approval of the finance report. And Mr. Shiers, I'm going to toss the ball in your court.
Let's start with, there hasn't been any, any changes really in our gift fund, fund eighty-one, so let's move into the general fund. At the end of May, we've collected eighteen million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, seventy-eight dollars. For the month of May, specifically, we collected six hundred forty thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars. That was about twenty-three hundred dollars more than we did in May of '24, so very negligible amount collection-wise. It's pretty, pretty flat. Since August, we have seen an increase of one million, one hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars in our general fund collections. Pre-portion of that's probably the, probably pre-portion is going to be the target settlement. Some of that is going to be prior year collections. As far as collections. So, you know, all, all total general fund, we're just staying. Collections are looking about like they did last year.
Okay, thank you.
The building fund. Building fund, we've collected four million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars for the year. For the month of May, we'd collected two thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. That's about fifteen thousand, five thirty-one less than May of '24. May of '24, we had, last year, we had some prior year collections that came in in May that bumped that, that collection up. So this year, we didn't have that. It's just, it's just what we collected just in May right now. So since August, we've seen a decrease in the, in the building fund revenue of eight hundred eight thousand. That's due primarily to an eight hundred fifty-one thousand dollar insurance payment that we received last year on the roofs. So we receive that money, that shows a collection, but it's not actually tax collections. Please be, enter building fund. So you take that out, that's the annual increase around forty-two thousand. So again, we're collecting about like we did last year. Stay real close. It may be just a tick of an increase, but you know, everything seems to be going up evaluation, inflation, class and do that. So. As far as investments. Looks like interest rates are holding pretty, just pretty steady where they were a month ago. We, everything's invested between four-point-two and four-point-nine-five percent. It's showing the general building fund, it's showing the general fund balanced down just a little bit. We took, took some out for payroll and that kind of thing. We get it, we invest it, we take it out, that gain a little bit. So there's, but there's six million, two hundred ninety-six thousand invested in the general fund, three million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand in the building fund. So that's a total invested of nine million, five hundred sixty-five thousand. Child nutrition fund, there's two hundred fifty thousand there. Seeking fund, eleven thousand. Gift fund, two hundred fifty thousand. So total invested between all the five funds is ten million, one hundred seventeen thousand. Staying pretty steady as far as investments. Looking at some of our expenditures comparisons. We have encumbered in the general fund three hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars less than we had this time last year. We paid out six hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred fourteen thousand less. There's, there's probably a payroll there, but it's just dates that are going to hit. So we're, we're staying pretty, pretty comfortable. We've uncovered three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred forty-seven dollars more in the building fund. Paid out two hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-three more. Again, bought the buses and some of that came out of building fund. Offset some of that. All, all told, you know, building fund, general fund is our, kind of our operating funds. All told, we've encumbered forty-three thousand dollars more, but we paid out four hundred fifty-one thousand, six eighty-one less than we had last year. So again, forty-three thousand on seventeen million dollar budgets, not a huge, huge percentage. So same pretty, same pretty even as far as operating and that kind of thing.
Questions? Anybody? And we'll move on to three-point-four, approval of first order encumbrances.
As far as, there's not a lot, a lot, lot to talk about on the encumbrances. For the most part, we're finishing up some of our grant expenses, our grant expenditures, summer reading program. There's some like the AHS ticket classroom equipment. That's about twelve hundred dollar expenditure. That's OETT grant materials are in there. Straw readers act, there's a six hundred dollar expense there. Supplies for the fax classroom. Some of those career tech things is finishing up the 412 money from, from career tech program incentive money. There's a, putting a door between the two classrooms and the portable building at Washington. Two portables. One had a door connecting classrooms and one didn't. So we're putting a door between the two to connect those two classrooms. So like, so there's not a lot of unusual expenditures, expenditures in the general fund. Building fund. Kind of same story next verse. Same chapter, same song next verse. It's cleaning supplies for the summer, foot floors, racks, things like that. All, all those kinds of things. There's air conditioner mini split to put for the office in Longfellow. They built out an air conditioner heater for a year. So putting a mini split there. Sidewalk to, putting a sidewalk to the portables at Washington from the, where the teachers park back in the portables there. sidewalk in there. Other than that, it's just the normal AC repairs and things like that. So. Child nutrition. Just one expense. Keystone, it's our twenty-eight thousand. It's our final, final bill for Keystone Reserves this year. Everything's just pretty, pretty standard. Finishing up, closing up the year.
Questions? Get number three for five, approval of extra duty assignment schedule.
Just a handful of changes. It's really just additions for our summer pride program. Summer stuff. Kenty Adams, assistant softball coach. Summer stipend for her. Coach Beeler for assistant football. Morgan Cook, we increased his summer baseball pay since he's head coaching that deal. He needed the head coach. Summer stipend on that. Coach Dell for summer basketball. I think he's our starting. Kind of hit the ground running. He's, he's all over it. Kelly Franz, summer basketball. Ty Hooper, middle school, summer football. John Johnson.
Were they highlighted?
Yeah, someone's highlighted in yellow.
Maybe on the next option.
Yeah, I just, I was on three.
Trey Johnson, Jeremy Jones, Mia Jones. That's all basketball stuff. Megan Kirby for summer cheer camp, middle school. Tenshy, assistant football. Carrie Pennell, she is our, she's our secretary at Lincoln. She's agreed to take the child nutrition since Patricia's leaving us. And she's already kind of started that, so we prorated that child nutrition amount we agreed on last month to cover gene for her.
We have a summer track coach?
There's Coach Wilson.
Are we, are we doing summer track? On page?
No, we, that's not one that we typically had.
It's highlighted.
It's summer football.
It's under track. I just.
Oh.
It was under track. I just, that's got.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the ones with.
Is it? I'm looking at the one that doesn't have names on it.
Okay, how's that don't make this name? Mary Torrey, summer track. All right, blood toll drawn.
Is that like cross-country or something?
Yeah, she was one of our assistant track coaches in cross-country. Hasn't typically had a summer thing. She's been out there with summer pride and doing the thing. So that's where that came from. Sorry.
No, that's.
Coach Wilson poked my head. He's the head coach.
I see it now. It's, it's, on this one I'm looking at doesn't have any names to it. I guess I'm looking at.
That's one that we added. Yeah, Coach Wilson football. So that's the, the ones highlighted yellow on that personnel list is the new, new stuff or the summer stuff. So that's the only changes to our extra duty schedule.
Any other questions or clarification? Okay, now we'll move over to three-point-six, approval of activity fund.
Kind of same story. There's not a lot. Finished out the year, expenses we've had was, you know, sports bank with some of that kind of stuff. Not a lot of, not a lot of income recently received through the spring. Student council put twenty-three hundred dollars in. T-shirt sales thing with that. Wrapped up the fundraisers at the elementary schools. There's not, not a lot of movement as far as revenues. Expenditures, like I said, we have sports bank with some, I think. So not, not a whole lot of movement in our activity fund.
Okay, we go to three-point-seven, approval of activity fund fundraisers.
The only fundraiser is softball. Coaching staff, of course, wants to host a team skills camp June third and June fifth. Camps are good team building, gives the coaching staff an opportunity to work with junior and high school softball players. Prior to the season starting, this is open to all seventh and twelfth grade softball players. Any extra funds will be for softball equipment, game balls, buckets, hitting teams, the things to play the sport. So. They can start, they can start practice July fifteenth, I think is the date. So try and get some of these camps in early in June, that kind of thing.
There's a lot of them.
And we have to. Start to see the fundraiser with all the things I was saying.
Two-point-eight. No, we just did that one, three-point.
It is three-point-eight, so next one.
Oh, inter account transfers. Thank you, Paul.
Just had one, transfer from Lincoln Elementary Account to the Veterans Lunches Account, forty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. They invited veterans to come eat lunch with students.
I've got three online.
Yeah.
So there's that one. From the banquet fund into child nutrition. Haven't used the banquet fund since the 2021 school year. The funds used to be used to order kitchen supplies, things like that. Traditionally be child nutrition. So they wanted to close that account and remove all the money of that account into child nutrition account. And high school golf to the high school science club, a hundred fifty dollars. They use their new laser engraver to engrave the tumblers that they gave out as prizes and things. Their golf tournament. So.
That's cool.
Transfer a hundred fifty dollars from golf to the science club.
Three-point-nine, approval of child nutrition report.
Mills served. We served, everything's last of May. We're only in school for two weeks. Served two thousand. Told you how many we actually served. Served about two thousand breakfasts a year and forty-four hundred lunches. We actually served two thousand four hundred fifty-six breakfasts and five thousand seven hundred fifty-four lunches in May. Still seems like a lot of trees.
It's a lot of food.
In May, we revenueed fifty-five thousand, quarter ninety-seven dollars more than May of '24. Again, it's, it's kind of one of those cyclical things when people pay their lunch accounts. Had a hard push, get lunch, lunch bills paid and things like that at the end of school year. I'm sure that's where some of that revenue came. So. And I think we increased lunch prices this year a little bit. So it's going to show an increase in revenues from that. Our expenses also went up with that. So anyway, that's child nutrition.
Thank you. Three-point-ten, approval of board policy procedures.
I don't have any policy.
Okay, three-point-eleven, clarity, following items as surplus.
Band has a list of old equipment, sort of amounts to. We talked about that last summer.
A lot of instruments on it.
We talked about that last summer and not wanting to surplus with new bands, teacher coming in, things like that. They've got a, they've got a good inventory. They told me, all the instrument stuff on here are old and, you know, not repairable or it costs more to repair than to replace. So they want to surplus this. So there's a lot of, several instruments, several cases.
Cases, no more.
Found a, found a empty case for a Yamaha trombone. I don't want to be Yamaha trombone guy. It might have been a case, right?
Some of these instruments have the carbon decoma stickers still.
Well, that's right, yes.
Yeah. It's been a while.
So what, where do they go?
So they will go into surplus and then we will move them down to the bus barn until we have a sale and then we'll, an auction.
There's several things. I mean, equipment-wise, surplus things that are already down there. We've surplus. There's a lot of online auctions. Purple Wave is one of the, lawn mowers and things like that. Talked to Midwest music and they may have, they might want to buy them.
Depends what kind of condition. Sometimes you're right. You more have more money to fix it.
Trying to. Talked to them.
Make them a deal on them all. Take them all for one price.
Take all for one big bucket price.
Talking to Steve Ellis and some of the principals, we need to get everything tagged that's been surplus.
Yes.
It's not being used. They could be set for 10 years and we're setting, we need to get inventory to surplus and have a big sale.
That's right.
Like, like the old days.
That's right.
Sure.
Try and, try and unload some of our storage and we can store the good stuff. Anyway, that's kind of the thing.
Thank you for that. So motion to approve items three-point-one and three-point-ten. Perfect, three-point-eleven as on agenda on the, item on agenda.
I move for approval of items three-point-one through three-point-eleven. Second?
McDermott.
Yes.
Kingleton.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Moving on, administrative report. Four-point-one is principal's report. And I'm just going to pass all, four-point-one, four-point-two, four-point-three over to you, sir.
Okay, we'll start with Washington.
Hello, everyone. Happy summer.
Yes.
So our enrollment numbers are, what we ended school with, 235 students at Washington.
Have you been getting it yet?
What?
Have you been getting it yet?
Not yet. Not in the last two weeks. Nobody. So actually, we have for next year. We've had some people come in, newbies. Yeah. Um, not a lot of activities going on. We did start our summer reading academy today. So we didn't have all of our students. We have 10 enrolled, but we have most of them there today. So that's very exciting to have students in the building again and they're working hard on their reading skills. We have two teachers for that, Ms. Erica Kuhn and Ms. Tabitha Carruthers are teaching. I also wanted to mention that you will be seeing some money coming out for Washington. We have some money to spend left over from our OETT technology grant. We have just some money left over that we weren't able to get a few things that were on our original budget. So we have to spend that money before July first. We're hoping to get more iPads so that we can have a little more one-to-one in our early childhood classrooms. Um, so that, you'll see some money coming out for that. But I also wanted to give a shout out to the Alva State Bank again because we are starting the process of ordering and adding things to our playground for our outdoor classroom that they granted us money for. So thank you for your generosity, Alva State Bank. And we can't wait to get those things added to the playground. And then me and myself, Ms. Ferris, our librarian, Ms. Carruthers, first grade, Ms. Ledbetter, pre-K, and Ms. McCamey, kindergarten, they were like my core team for the grant. You guys have seen some of the things, like the little robot and the iPads and all that stuff. So the final step that we have to do is attend their last quarter meeting. So we, we meet like the OETT board, basically the Oklahoma Educational Technology Trust Board. And then we talk about successes that we had and challenges that we had with the grant. And one thing that we are required to do is create a video that shows some of our success and thanks, give some thanks to the OETT board. So I, I attached our video and I'm so glad it's working actually. So you can show what we shared with them last week.
Thanks to the OETT grant, we have completely reshaped the way that we approach instruction, scheduling, and engagement with our young learners. With our robots, our iPads, our Osmos, we have sparked a new curiosity, creativity, and a new love for learning. We are deeply grateful for this investment in our students' future and it is a real heartfelt gratitude that we say thank you to the K20 Center and to OETT.
What's your favorite thing about Osmo?
Because it's, it's, um, the coloring one is really, really.
The one with the monster? What, what do you like about it?
Because it's colored and it's.
It's right. Is your favorite thing about Osmo?
The mystery.
The mystery game, the detective game? What do you like about the detective game?
Because you have to find them.
You have to find things? It's all mysteries? Well, that's really cool.
I like the band because its cute voice and face is like this.
So I'm sure you've heard this before because Lincoln received it last year and the high school also received it, but they came once a month to give us training. So the professional development that came with the grant was really cool. And it was a wonderful opportunity because our teachers don't, we try to encourage them to go to professional development, but it is hard to schedule it and get something that everyone is interested in. But their PD can be applied to every student, every teacher. We can all utilize it. So that has been, we will miss that next year, but we plan on still collaborating with K20 and doing things with them because they're all about innovation and what is best for students. So that's what we showed them last, last week and I thought you might like to see it too.
Did you get an egg?
I guess. They give us candy. We all got candy and they fed us lunch. It was honestly really nice. It's a really nice, like, and every school that received the grant had a video like that. So we got to collaborate with other schools and so it was a good, good time.
That's good. Thank you.
Great experience.
Allison's not here, so I guess I will talk about her. I've got her other deal. So Longfellow, let's see here, they ended with 150 students and the projected enrollment for next year is 165. So looking at a few more students there. And again, had to end the year with lots of fun activities. It's wild and crazy and lots of good things going on. So you have the spellathon, pie in the face, food drive, dunk tank, last day, school pickball tournament, spellathon, water balloon fight, Longfellow field day, and then of course the third grade reading, the bell is always a great time. So. They're coming in June down there. Summer reading academy starts June, started today. So they're going to get that off to, off on its speed there.
I would say I, I had the privilege of running by. You know, I've been harassing Mrs. Tucker since February about the, and I wanted to see her and she saw me coming and went, oh my gosh. But she got dumped, I don't know, at least twice and got like 17 pies in the face. So that just shows you how much they love you. That's why I said they just love you, Mrs. Tucker. And she. The kids were screaming and had a lot of fights. And I was, something else was amazing. They had water balloon fights. Okay? And the kids all lined up on the fence and I thought, well, now what are we going to do? And they all started walking towards the basketball court area, picking up all of the busted balloons. And they all started walking towards the basketball court area, picking up all of the busted balloons. And they were just having a little contest, so I thought, well, many hands make, it'd be very easy to do, so anyway, sorry. I had to toss that in because I've been picking on her about really good.
All right, and for Lincoln, um, we ended with 153 students, we stayed the same, we lost one fifth grade student, uh, projected. For next year, we have only 62 fourth grade coming in, so, um, for my teachers sake, I hope we don't get a whole lot of new enrollments because it could get a little wild and crazy, um, because we're going down to three teachers, so, fifth grade, we have 78, so we're going to stick with four. Um, I thought a really cool opportunity for Lawson Ream, um, she's a, well, going to be sixth grade student now, and she was a member of the Kid Governor Program through the Oklahoma Institute for Child Advocacy. Um, she had, was invited, she's been out of the city a couple of different times, but this particular time, um, she was a part of a group of students who, uh, were asked questions by, um, other senators, um, and they were asked about their school district. And, um, I, in talking with, um, Charlene, she said that it was quite eye-opening to hear all of the other things that go on in some of these other schools and they're very grateful for our schools and, and although we deal with a lot of things, we don't deal with a lot of things. So, um, very cool experience for that young lady, she's got a bright future. And, uh, again, end of the school year, we had lots of fun things going on and just a few pictures down below there. Hosted students, there's the big fifth grade promotion party there, which is always a fun day. And, wet and muddy. It was pretty a cool, cool start to the day, just a couple of fourth graders there, so, good time. And there's, there's Lincoln's staff, we had a good group staff picture there, so, had a moment to take a picture of all of us and it was fun.
Very nice, thank you.
Okay, middle school, we finished the year with 217 students, um, 76 eighth graders went through eighth grade promotion, and we have 77 incoming sixth grade students, so, we're pretty much hanging the same there. Toby Antone and Kayden Lambert, you know, were the speakers, felt like they did a phenomenal job. The kids really seemed to enjoy that and we got, you know, good praises from that, um, so we would like to continue to try to use our graduates to come back and do eighth grade promotion, if they're available, thought that was very good. Eighth grade, we had the skip day that last week of school, that was a big hit. I really wanted to touch and say thank you to all of the, the businesses that donated, um, Ignite Physical Therapy, Marshall Funeral Home, Alba Beer Co., the Methodist Church Women made cookies and snacks, um, Greg Bowman cooked all the hot dogs and I am telling you, there were tons of hot dogs. But, it was, it was great, um, the eighth graders, you know, the parents came out and they, um, were chaperones and hung out in the park with the kids, it's very good. At first, we started at the middle school, we handed out their eighth grade shirts, they went down to Rialto, watched the sandlot, um, you know, had some popcorn and pop and then went up to the park and played on the inflatable, so, you know, this is, we've done this to kind of replace our, um, our skate trip that kind of always ends in a negative, so, you know, we were positive, guess what, we had no, nobody got hurt. No broken bones, no fractures, yeah, so this was good. Special shout out to Bailey Haida, she stepped up, organized the whole event, um, you know, she did have some other senior sponsors, but she pretty much put it all together and I just wrote the POs and, and we were good to go, so, I really thank her. And then, um, to end the year, we had our annual AMS Talent Show, phenomenal this year, um, the winner was Blair Porter, he played the electric guitar. Second place was Joplin Brot, who sang and played an instrument, and then third place was Elen Meeker, and they were, I mean, just so talented.
They are.
It's so neat to watch, so, that's the middle school.
Thank you.
I'm filling in for Dr. Nicewager today, uh, for the high school principal report, freshman, uh, we finished the year with 64, 72 sophomores, 68 juniors, and we graduated 64 seniors with 268 total enrollment. We had a wonderful end of the year, graduated 64 seniors with fabulous ceremony in the gym. This is the second year that, uh, we held this in the gym and that allows us to not have to issue tickets, um, and it was, it ended up being standing room only on that day. Our school is blessed with the OETT technology grant, uh, enabling us to purchase $40,000 worth of technology and provided us worth, uh, $25,000 in professional development. The final meeting for the year with OETT was held May 28th. Mr. Eckhart's students created the following video to demonstrate the technology purchased and how that equipment was used. This video highlights some of the great things that went on this year at the high school.
Hello, I'm Dr. Vicky Nicewager, the principal at Alma High School. I'd like to thank OETT for the grant, for the opportunities, for the wonderful gifts that we have received for the professional development and the equipment that we have received with our grant. Our, uh, $40,000 that we spent to purchase equipment, we purchased things that will catapult our programs into the future. We have great plans, we have plans for how we would like to structure our programs and the things we would like to do. Through the funds that we received with the grant, we were able to take that light years closer to our, our goal and we are grateful for every bit of the opportunities that are afforded us, as well as the professional development we have.
The laser cutter helped us out a lot on our project because we were able to take the model that I made on our designing CAD software and take the dimensions and shrink it down to have precise cutting on the styrofoam that we get to use for the museum.
And it also helped instead of having to measure it out with rulers, really putting in the dimensions and getting a solid cut and with the book award, since it's harder to cut with them exactly, um, really get it smooth.
It's been a wonderful experience, it's very fun, kids learn a lot in these projects. It's really been a blessing to Alma High School, having this project and this, uh, this class in our school and student television network, for which they have got third place and honorable mentions, it's been wonderful.
Has helped me and my classmates a lot in aeronautics when it comes to us designing different engines, like we designed some piston engines and some different jet engines, and being able to really look at it in a three-dimensional scale and dissect it and take it apart to see what, it's really taught me a lot about the different components of engines, and not even just engines, it can teach you about the components of a multitude of things, it has many different things that you can use.
Our software is very handy when it comes down to editing our, our videos, allows us to publish them or just make them. We have dedicated careers for inside that classroom that allow our students to make sure that we can make, publish, and edit our videos easily.
Students are the ones that push that, with some of the equipment they got. So that, uh, jump to the athletic side of things, um, Campbell Gassford was, uh, selected to be a part of the All-Star, All-Star baseball team this year. We had started summer baseball, we have a game going on right now in Chisholm and we have a home game tomorrow. We also have the home games, June 9th and June 17th, uh, girls golf, uh, the last time we met, they were getting ready to compete at the state level and they finished 11th in the state, uh, so, a lot of applause for them and, I mentioned last month, but I want to bring it up again, they won the state academic champion, uh, you just can't say nothing about that. For track, I'm going to jump, I'm going to flip-flop here, individual spotlight, Kylie Ader, Lindy Friday, Lake and Gaddy, Mike Alowden, they all set a school record for a 4x200 meter relay with a one minute and 44.83 second time, uh, they did that at state, I believe. Uh, Lake and Gaddy, she won the 400 meter, um, dash, she's a 2025 All-Stater, 2025 Senior All-Star by class, 400 meters school record holder with 56.97 seconds. She placed third in the 200, um, she's a 200 meter school record holder with 25.44 seconds. As I mentioned, uh, the 400, the 4x2, uh, they placed fourth in that. Uh, the 4x4 placed fifth, um, and she's also a part of the school record holder in the 4x4 with 4 minutes and 6.29 seconds. Lindy Friday, um, on the 4x200 meter, um, third place, a record holder with that, she's a part of the 4x400, fifth place, and the 4x400 record holder, she is a 2025 Senior All-Star by class. Kellen Pinco, 2025 high jump state runner-up, and he holds the new school record of 6 feet 8 inches and he was a 2025 Senior All-Star by class. Lake and Gaddy was nominated for the News 9, she was in the game. Uh, News 9 is supposed to be on campus this Friday, about 10:45-ish, I believe, to present her a check and maybe, you know, kind of film for her story. Um, she was, uh, selected as the athlete of the month for the month of June, and with that comes a $5,000 check that she has to donate to a school and she chose Alma, thankfully, um, and she elected to, she asked them if she could split that check up and they said, of course, so, $2,500 is going to go to Ladybug Basketball and $2,500 is going to go to the track program. And I actually received those checks in the mail earlier today, so we'll get those deposited and better those programs. Um, summer pride kicked off today, uh, we had 43 high school boys show up, 22 high school girls, 22 middle school students, and 54 second through sixth graders show up today. Um, the youth basketball camp also started, uh, that was, there was, seemed like a million kids running around, so, um, next week we have baseball softball, the following week we will have our football camp, and then the last week of June is when we do our outdoor camp. It is a time of, we're hosting 7-on-7, I believe, um, one or two times in the month of June, but baseball's all over the place, basketball's going to be all over the place, so, our athletes are out there doing the things they need to do to represent Alma well.
Great school year, thank you. Don't go anywhere, you'll have to stay a couple of five years. When you get that in the minutes, like the contract, for five years, you're promised. Thank you for everything you do, I appreciate, we all appreciate you very much. Okay, super tennis court, 4.2.
This, living on the facility, um, uh, John told me before the meeting that they started in the high school, he said all the, every classroom in the high school's got wax on it at this point, still got to do the hallways and some of that kind of stuff to let wax dry here before the new furniture back on top. Start here, they'll rotate these buildings, uh, we're all focused on, on facility improvement. When we get done with the floors and all that, probably some painting projects, exterior paint projects, uh, plugged a couple of people working some pricing on power washing buildings, some of that kind of stuff, so, uh, that's, that's kind of a janitor custodian focus of things. Representative for tri-band roofing, met with OCEP representative to come and visually inspect the roof, the, uh, OCEP guy wanted to come look at the things. Supposed to hear back from, I thought I'd know last Friday, he sent me an email saying that, uh, they took some core samples of the roof, uh, things like that, to see what, really into underneath all that urethane, and, uh, he said they're going, doing, doing their, working their magic, whatever they do. Should hear something, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, I've heard about Wednesday, I was going, see where we're at with that. I met with Andy Davis from Stevens Smith Corporation about the bonding capacity of our district and the options we have for potential bond issue. Nailed down some pretty hard numbers, we talked to architects, we talked to the people, kind of have a general idea of what new building would cost. Next step was talk to Ken, next step then is to, um, put the big committee together and really nail some things down, so, on the direction we want to go. Just trying to get all the options so we can have an educated discussion with that committee, instead of just kind of shooting the dark.
Sure, thank you.
See what we're capable of even doing. He's put some of those hard numbers together, some of those projections, I did have him work up a projection for, uh, it's a capital improvement bond, you know, and they sell a series bond they can work in every three years or five years, doing a small transportation run in the middle of that to replace activity buses and spurpins and all of that, so, he's working up a couple of different options for us. Uh, transportation wise, um, had 41 activity trips in May.
That's two weeks of school.
In two weeks of school. I told Steve, I was getting his summer bus maintenance thing with the fleet, uh, because he's just hot baby net. I'd like to get the Van Hool down to, he was talking about taking over a national bus in Tulsa, see if they can work on it. The closest authorized mechanic, I guess, dealer, whatever, for Van Hool is in Dallas. So, I haven't had a lot of luck with him, thought about taking over National and see if they can at least look at the air conditioner, AC system and that and see if there's.
Salvage, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a new bus?
No, the Van Hool's the old charter. Uh, that one, the new bus is going back to National in Tulsa for just some warranty work, and he told me there's two things on it, I can't remember what they are now. One of them, one of it's AC and there's a purge valve or something on it. Couple of things, it's normal, never a trick you've had especially. He would work on that kind of stuff, um, told me, we talked about surplus and things, the other one's Etch Atra, uh, who've had some issues with and there's a, there's a warning line, I think it has to do with the dev system. You can regen it, but the warning doesn't ever go away, right? And, and I guess that Richard's plugged it in, doesn't hold it, give it a manual regen and still, it's, it's something to do with Etch Atra and I guess, and the Etch Atra knows it's an issue, but they don't know how to fix it, so, one of those things. So, I told Steve, you know, it's one of those things, especially between the Van Hool and Etch Atra, Etch Atra's new enough, Van Hool's only got until 500,000 miles and those things, many and half's not uncommon, so, they're new enough, I don't know, then, surplus them and see if we can roll back in a freightliner or two like we just bought and try and, try to get all of our fleet of the same, anyway. There's, there's some things.
There's something to be said for common hour.
There you go, so, uh, and that's such a nice bus, it's, that freightliner's pretty, pretty sleek, so. I've been looking at some of that kind of stuff, I think the first thing is to get it fixed, you know, so, working on that. And then I want to say again, for all of our listeners, that, uh, Steve Ellis is teaching a bus driver course and we would love to have as many certified bus drivers as we can get. So, uh, Northwest Tech, June 2nd, I guess it started today, um, 6th through the 5th, so, anybody wanted to, I'm sure we can get him, do something, work something out. I know he's going, I've been teaching the course out there, in a couple of weeks, so, can't get in with this one, may be able to enroll there. Uh, that's the Northwest Tech again, so, the portion that's online, then they have to do the driving and I'm, I'm sure we'll fix it. So anyway, uh, doing all the things, uh, transportation, facility-wise.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, book report, please, sir.
Okay, resignations, had, uh, four resignations, um, Zeph Warren was an assistant baseball coach, day coach, uh, Kiara Roberts, paraprofessional, Samantha Holly, paraprofessional, and Carly Williams, our middle school, piano's teacher. Pursuing personal adventures, I guess, is the way to say that.
Sure.
Personal adventures, I guess. That was, I think that was a tough decision for Carly, to be real honest, because she's got a lot going, um, with the business that they started and things like that. Feels like she needs to focus that way, so, anyway, those are the four resignations I've got.
Okay, move on to five members, you guys ready? Items to current business, 5.1, discussion with possible ward action, vote to approve and offer employment on a one-year temporary contract for applicants for certified teachers for the 25, 26 school year. teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So I've got five, uh, officials offered five positions, I'm gonna give them an opportunity to talk about their, equal Jessica Smith, uh, part-time Title One, uh, two days a week to replace the part-time title, resigned. Kylie Gilli, uh, at Longfellow in the third grade, Jordan Patrick Lincoln in the fourth grade, Margot Hamilton at the middle school, uh, teaching social studies and, and coaching, and Morton Cook, uh, she was currently an assistant baseball coach, and, anyway, graduated bit off of math position at high school, so.
Assistant, he was assistant baseball coach.
So, uh.
So I'm very pleased to introduce Ms. Jessica Smith, which many of you probably already know, as an Alva High School graduate, later went to OSU, and she has experience teaching early childhood in Edmund and Burlington, and she also taught Title One reading in Burlington. So she stayed home with her babies a few years, and now her babies are in school, which means we get her at Washington, which I'm so happy about. Uh, Ms. Garvey is who we had who left, and she was two days a week, and she left big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that Jessica will fill those and do an amazing job. She has a wonderful energy, enthusiasm, and obvious love for kids, and so she will fit in very well at Washington, and we can't wait to have her. And she's a reading specialist, cherry on top, because she's perfect for Title One.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, I will, um, Kylie is not here, she's actually doing the bus driver class, so.
Yay for her!
Yay for her, so.
She is cherry on top.
Cherry on top for that one.
Bus drivers.
Kylie, uh, yeah. Kylie's Cherokee, uh, high school graduate, twenty-twenty. Um, she went to Northwestern here and got her education degree. She actually was in sports, um, science there, and she taught, or at Ally, and she taught PE. And, um, she comes from a family of educators, so, uh, she's going to be teaching, um, I believe, third grade at Longfellow. Uh, she's gonna do a great job, um, so we're excited to have her, I know Alice is excited to have her, and, and she'll be, she'll be having a field trip bus duty. So, um, uh, we recommend to hire Kylie Gilli for that sort of great position. And then sitting beside me, I have Jordan Pinner, she's a twenty-ten graduate of Cherokee High School as well. She has two bachelor's degrees, um, she has a one degree in, um, psychology with a minor in sociology, social work, and then also a forensic science, so when I need to investigate some.
Wow!
I've got a high school. Got a little out here. She spent the last five years working with children, either in a daycare setting, um, and then the last three years, um, in a kindergarten as a para. So, over in Burlington, um, she's got a son, Gus, who will be, uh, coming to school here, so we are very excited to have her enter into the classroom, she just kind of has that natural gift, and we're very excited to have her, so. Jordan Pinner, we would like to recommend her for hiring.
Okay, and I'm bringing back Margot down on the end, we're not gonna talk about when she graduated. Right? Let's. I know, I know, yeah, that, that kind of happens, but we're super excited that she's coming back, she's coming back to us as a certified teacher, she's gonna be teaching, um, some sixth grade social studies for us, and making some changes, and very excited that she gets to, you know, influence some kids' lives, help out coaching, and we're just very thrilled, so. Everybody knows Margot, right? She can drive a bus!
I've been a passiver in my.
Well, we're mad for this. That's why they never wanted me to get my back.
Then, uh, Morgan Cook, he's coaching right now, uh, he, you know, he's working for our summer baseball program, so he's down in Chisholm. Uh, he graduated from Alva, just graduated from Northwestern. He's gonna help us out with math, I know we're real excited about having him, we're in need of good math teachers, and I think he's gonna be a really good help for us.
Well, thank you very much. I would recommend to hire these five individuals for, as my teachers.
I salute you. Thank you, I was entertaining.
I said.
Kane.
Yes!
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Congratulations! Welcome to the family. Yeah, maybe I should, you know, we could stay. She just wants to stay.
Baseball game, too.
Jess has a T-ball game.
Okay, I was gonna say, they would like it if I'd let them leave, but I'm not more than.
Well, I'm gonna go check up on the baseball game.
I bet you are, okay. Thank you very much. Very much for coming.
They have OU on the TV here for five people.
All right, five point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a change in the end-of-school summer reading academic teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-five.
Uh, we approved this last month. Sandy Wilson, uh, saw plans for bathing things, uh, was unavailable to do summer reading, so, Jared Cooten, uh, figured he'd do it at the least. Everybody else is the same, it's, basically trade off Sandy for Jared Cooten.
What does she teach?
Which Cooten did you ask?
Jared Cooten.
She teaches first grade.
I will entertain a motion to address five point two.
I do approve of the five point two.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Five point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a contract for summer lawn care.
Yeah, we talked a lot about the different things when you get done, a lot of things outside, exterior painting and the things, so, uh, so I put a deal out on Facebook, a couple places, taking estimates for what it would cost to hire a company to mow. Got five back, five or six, anyway, uh, uh, after evaluating those, uh, everything was, I think DT spraying was fifty-five hundred a month, and that, a month is based on four weeks, right? Try to mow each side at least once, once a week, and then, uh.
About once a month, once a week?
Once a week.
Okay.
It rains more than we thought, it rains less than we thought. We just had it, we just had it set a grommer on.
Sure, no, I understand.
Once a week. So he has a fifty-five hundred, um, thirty, uh, there were several, trying to find them those. There's some close to eight thousand. Some, some of these estimates, like the loan agreement's a weekly basis, it's two thousand eighty dollars a week, so take that times four, right, to get, just to get it apples to apples and everything, so, anyway, um, I, I was excited with the interest we had in it.
Yes, sir.
So that's a good thing. Anyway, uh, for what we're needing done, I feel like, uh, look at the estimates, DT spraying is probably the best.
Who is DT?
Derek Thomas. I would recommend to approve the contract with DT spraying lawn care for summer landscaping.
So let me, let me make sure I understand. It's five thousand five hundred dollars a month for two months, or for the whole year?
Well, then, I would assume it'd be till we're done mowing.
Or is it a twelve-month contract?
No, just, just during, it's not long. Just for the mowing, yes.
So we're probably through October?
Probably January, October, and that's something.
It starts to taper off at the end there.
That's something we'll probably redo after school starts. See where we're at. That would be my question.
I don't know how you evaluate that contract, knowing, how many times you wanna mow, how many times you wanna mow, how many.
But it's hard, I can't, I can't read the future to mow.
Yeah, it does depend on the weather, so.
I, I, I know, but I mean, it's.
No, keep asking questions, that's what we.
I just, I, I think it's hard, I mean, I think, but I do think it ought to be some kind of a cap, or, I mean, is it just open-ended?
We could cap it through August.
But it is.
How about we cap it for months, and if they, if they go above the fifty-five hundred, they have to have approval?
I just need to set some parameters, but he, and taking all the personalities out of it, I don't mean that, I'm just looking at it as a contract. It seems very open-ended.
He's got a bottom of his to, uh, communicate with me, if they have to mow more or less, based on.
Oh, there you go.
He's got that parameter on his estimate. I did the math, if I hired three guys, ten dollars an hour, um, forty-hour work week, right? Fifty-one, eighty-five, I think is what that came out to for four weeks, and then put fuel on the things on top of that, so, I feel like he's pretty close to what we would do if we hired three guys for something.
So, June, July, and August, starts June one?
Uh, sorry, yeah, it'll start immediately.
But he's gonna mow all of our properties, which is a lot, every week, right?
Right. We go through these if you want.
No, I'm just, I mean, you know, that's one thing that's been a challenge, is when we do have rain, and God bless the rain, but moisture, but, uh, you know, sometimes our yards get a little shaggy over the summer, and that's been a challenge brought to my attention by our patrons, and so.
That's why I went this route.
That's right, I think, but I think it's important that, I mean, I'm, and we know we can only do so much, but I think it's important that we do everything in our power to, and if he's gonna weed eat and edge, I mean.
I would assume he probably has somebody helping him.
I would hope so, but I mean, that, the silt, that's, that's still, leaps and bounds above what we've been past summers. And there's no spraying included, right? No, uh-uh, uh-uh.
So are we actually entering into a binding contract with him?
It's just a contract later, so it's.
And the bus farm, and I, you know, that's one of those, I just, as I was looking at that, there, I thought, uh, I was thinking of the school proper, properties, and the, I don't read on the bus farm, but I think.
I, what I would put out to get estimates on was the five school sites, practice field, baseball field, softball field. Did they have time in the bus farm?
Sure.
And I think it's probably why they didn't have a price on the bus building, per se.
Any other questions, concerns?
It's not an entertained emotion, but your, your recommendation is DT.
I, I would recommend, I mean, I'm just kind of looking through some of these, uh, Pete environment, fifteen eighty-five a week, take that times four, and you're well beyond fifty-five hundred, uh, just to get apples to apples.
Sure.
And then it looks like he's doing more mowing than Pete would do, more, more times.
I just was, my concern was the, when it starts, when it's over.
Sure.
How, how long are you, is he responsible for?
I would.
That, that was what I, it looked like it was kind of open-ended for me.
It, it kind, it kind of is, just, I didn't know what date to put on there, as the last one.
I don't either.
Still get started, because Tony's busy then, too, so.
That's why it's, it's about a month.
That's why I had to do it on a per-month basis.
July, and he'll be mowing in August.
We're done mowing.
Until it gets really hot, and the grass starts dying.
Right, until things go dormant.
But the same, the experience of them.
I think we put estimates out, put it out like this every, every year, is what I would do. I would like to do it earlier in the year, I should have got, that's kind of my fault, I should have gone on it a little further, uh, should have looked at this in March.
But now they, but they're very aware that we're seriously about employing someone to do, and expect a good job to be got.
I think, I think that's the key right there, is just raising expectations of what. We had some conversations even graduation about, we need, we need some of that, we just, we need, we need to present ourself, but to do that, I think we have to reinvest and let's, let's discover where this all came from.
Well, thank you for your, for your work, I'm typically, you have a lot of many interests.
If you put a cap on it, yeah, I'd, I'd say do it through August.
I mean, I like it that it's mentioned in here that if, that he will get your okay for mowing more or less, you know, because I mean, weather well impacted this period.
Sure. They may mow more in June and less in July.
Wait until this week.
My, my yard looks.
But maybe you go around, some disagree, but I just.
But it mows once a week, I don't, I can't think of, I mean, I guess I can, but, it'd be pretty unusual to have to mow just these yards that are unfertilized and whatever, more than once a week.
Yeah.
For ten days.
But even the weed eating, making it look decent, but against the bill, that, that just makes everything look better.
I liked his two, he broke it down on, per instance, they all did, on per instance, so.
They do mow three times a week on the softball and baseball fields?
Football fields, softball and baseball.
Lots of fertilizer, lots of water on those facilities.
Yeah. Appreciate your work on that.
I got that.
Thanks, sir.
No, sure, yeah, over here. Make lotion, make food, DT spraying launches.
Thank you. Another second?
I'll second.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Five point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the AEA contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Uh, I met with, I mean, it's in, end of April, I think. There wasn't any changes to the negotiation contract on EEA's side, so, the document that's attached is just, uh, it's the same contract as we had last year, updates, dates, things like that. So anyway, I would, um, last year we did it, gosh, late, July, August, we approved that contract, and I told, uh, told his honor, I wanted to get this done early, because we're hiring teachers right now, we need to be able to give them the contract, like his contract, right? So, anyway, the goal is to be prepared in service to look at some of that.
Thank you for putting the work in to clean the document up with proper dates as well. So I would entertain a motion for five point four.
I salute you, thank you.
I second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Five point five, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an out-of-state travel request from the Alva High School speech and debate sponsor to travel to Springfield, Missouri, June twenty-ninth to July twelfth, twenty twenty-five, transporting students to a debate workshop.
Uh, Mr. Brock wants to take the, uh, some speech debate kids to Springfield, Missouri, twenty-ninth to the twelfth, uh, to a debate workshop, uh, take Suburban, I believe he'll take them over there, drop them off, come home, and go back the other week.
Oh, so it's just a suburban, I mean, I was wondering how many students he thought he was.
Hey, he's got, he's got Suburban on his request, so I assume.
Okay, not, not.
Six or fewer.
Okay, very good, thank you for the presentation.
So, anyway, I think it's awesome he's taking kids to a debate camp.
There's a motion?
So moved. Second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Five point six, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the College Hill Church of Christ, use a school bus during July fifth to the twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, this is the one we tabled a couple months ago, had some questions on what we're doing, that kind of thing. Uh, Steve Hamm is the cab director, I guess, of the Church of Christ Church Camp, it's in the area, area schools, west of Reno, east of, whatever, so, uh, he has requested to take one of our buses down to the, they take the campers from the camp into town for community service projects and back. Um, he requested bus two, said it didn't matter, that's just the bus he drives on the route that he drives every day. Bus two is one of our new ones, um, I would, I, I think he needs to take a bus, and I would suggest take bus number five. It's, it's very recant to sound, but it's not one of our brand-new buses either. They'll haul campers back and forth, so, maybe it's something we need to do to help, help them out.
But it stays down there with them?
It stays down there with them. They'll be using it probably, I don't know, every day.
Well, at least once, I guess, for taking the beauty service, then back to the camp.
Yeah, we take all the campers, not, not just our kids, we take all the campers.
We call them lots of kids.
So, but I do think it's, you know, I think it's public relations thing, you service things, it's a good thing to do.
He's one of our best drivers.
Yeah, he's one of our best drivers, so he's, he's very capable in that. I would suggest, I'd recommend allowing him to take bus number five to, to camp.
Will he be the one driving it?
I believe so. He did, he did provide insurance for, camp provides, and, uh, I believe it was his name on that insurance, something like that. Anyway, he's the camp director, he's the one that's insured. Anyway, he's the camp director, he's the one that's insured.
I entertain a motion.
I move, we approve item five point six. Second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Five point seven, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the First Baptist Church, use three school buses during July 14th to the 19th, 2025, to transport youth to and from Falls Creek in Davis, Oklahoma. They are going, dropping off, cleaning back, and then going, so, now, the bus is not staying.
Correct, this is a, same thing, a little bit different, this is hauling our students to Falls Creek and do it every single.
Go back down and pick them up.
I don't know if they, I don't know if they bring the bus back, or if they stay on, sponsors the bus to stay down there, whatever it is, they drive down there, the bus is, take it out with the kids, so, I'd recommend to allow First Baptist Church use for buses.
That's a good.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
All right, item six is new business, new business. Uh, seven, propose executive session to discuss the improvement of high school headspace